Oh, you got one of those insurance apps too? You know how this thing works?
No, I'm sorry. Not an app, it's my agent.
In this moment...
No, I'm fine, thanks.
It's good to know you have a trusted, independent auto owner's insurance agent, who's there when you need them.
Great.
Man, I gotta get one of those.
Or Insurance in Dublin is your local independent auto owner's insurance agency.
It's time for the council meeting to begin. We've asked Councilman Jones if he will give an indication tonight and afterwards we'll do the pledge.
My hands. Nothing to follow, just thank for this opportunity to gather and make decisions, Lord. We ask you to continue to knit this council together in love and unity, Lord. Continue to give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, Lord. We make decisions that's in the best interest of this city, Lord. We're just thanking for everyone that came out, Lord, and get them safe travels, Lord, till we meet again, Lord. These are other blessings. We ask your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'm gonna apologize in advance for any kind of faux pas I may have tonight. The mayor had to be out. He was earlier here earlier today, but had to leave for, I think, a recognition for one of his children, which I don't blame him for going. So, we're gonna muddle through this thing and y'all keep me straight, Mr. Jones, please. The first thing I need to do is I would need a motion to amend the agenda to add two items. One is a truck purchase and then the other is a resolution. And so, could I get a...
So moved, Mr. Mayor Proton. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Davis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, we will be adding those items right away. You've seen the minutes from last meeting. What's your pleasure on the minutes?
Approve to...make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Griggs. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is approval of bills for over three thousand dollars.
Make a motion when we pay the bills.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Edwards and a second by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on here is purchases of over $3,000. Mr. Jones.
We have three purchases. The first one is for replacement of the columns at the front of City Hall. Anybody walks in that front door has probably noticed they're looking pretty bad. They're wooden columns and they are structural, we found. So, they have to be there. They're holding the roof up. And so, as they get in bad shape, the roof's starting to sag a little bit. It's not really a problem yet, but it definitely will be. We are...we had a study done, figured out what we need to do. The estimate on that was about $55,000. We received four bids. The high bid was 81,900. The low bid was from Riley Contracting in Sonoya, Georgia, at $39,900. We've checked out their references and staff recommendation is to award the bid the amount of $39,900 to Riley Contracting.
You've heard the discussion on this. What's your pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Griggs and a second by Mr. Edwards. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, next item.
Next item I'm more excited about than anything we've bought, I think. It is a Bobcat T-770 compact track loader with a mulching head and a grapple. We had budgeted $108,000 for this. We received several bids and the low bid was $81,749 from Border Equipment. It does a work of many people sitting there with bush axes and chainsaws and things, you can imagine, and the danger of our folks getting hurt. We had a lot over on Tennessee Street that would have taken...Put Works tells me it would have taken a prison crew and our crews and Frankie's folks to haul off the debris a week to clean that lot up. And we had rented one of these machines and it took one man one day to do it. And he's safely inside that, he's not out there. You imagine, you get several people out there with clearing equipment, how dangerous that is, trying to keep yourself safe and keep others safe. So, I think it's really gonna put the city ahead with our lot clearing and our right-of-way maintenance. So, staff recommendation is to award to Border Equipment the bid to purchase the actual unit itself, the Bobcat, and then a mulching head and a grapple head, which will let...you attach that to the front of it, it'll let you reach over and pick up things and load them on the trucks.
So, you can use that beside a ditch, though ditch where we have problems?
There...
Keep it clean regularly?
You can, if it's not too steep. And I believe there's another attachment we could look at that's like a sickle bar mower that'll reach over in the ditch, you can drive along beside it and there's...it's very versatile. It's...I don't know if it will completely replace the side boom mower, we're still gonna need that for a lot of things. It does a...it's a little more versatile with what you're talking about. Chairman, Councilmember Johnson, it's a...it can reach out a lot farther and a lot more than angle, so, but...
But the person that operates, they don't have to have a special training for that, though?
They'll have training, but they don't have a special license, because it is dangerous. It's a powerful piece of equipment. Alright.
Well, you've heard, seen the video and heard the description. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Davis and Mr. Jones. Motion by Davidson, second by Mr. Jones. So, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It looks like we're gonna get a new toy for the city, which will be good.
It's gonna be a good thing.
And I tell you what, just coming on the heels of all the storm and stuff we had just this past year, think of how invaluable that is. I got a few projects that I've seen around town that, you know, that would come in really handy to take care of.
We could've really used it loading debris in the storm. It would've been a great thing.
I got a grapple on a tractor at the park, it's just amazing how much work you could get done with this thing, so.
You wouldn't buy a gallon of milk and immediately pour 70% of it out, would you? Then why would you do that with power for your home? 70% of electricity is lost on the way to your house, making it only 30% efficient. But, natural gas is 92% efficient. Electricity is good to power your lights and electronics, but using natural gas for certain appliances is the most cost-effective, energy-efficient, and environmentally-friendly mix for your home. Use it, don't lose it. Choose the right energy mix. Choose natural gas.
Next item, Mr. Jones.
Next item is a Ford Expedition. It's a used unit we've located on, for sale by the U.S. Forestry Department, I believe. It has 56,000 miles, plus or minus. I believe there's a picture of it in your packet. But we would like your approval, it's about to come online, bids, and we would like your approval to bid up to $10,000 for this vehicle.
Have we, I mean, is it running in good shape? Or is not?
Yes, we've, these vehicles we have purchased, Chief, do you know how many we-
Six.
And they, everyone has been jam up, we actually, well, we're on TV, I won't say, we got a friend in the forestry department that likes us up in where these things are sold, and they really, when a good one comes up for sale, he lets us know. He kind of looks after, says, hey, this is a good unit, it's running very well, this one y'all need to bid on. So, no, he's not doing anything illegal, but just when a good one comes up, he lets us know. So, but yeah, we've been very pleased with every one we've purchased.
All right. Well, you're already over there, Josh. Y'all have heard the, might you have heard?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor Proton.
Second. Motion by Mr. Brown and second by Mr. Edwards. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a presentation by representatives of the St. Patrick's Festival Committee, and if y'all would come up, state your names for the record, and tell us a little bit about what we can expect over the next month.
I'm Debbie Frost, and I'm the general co-chair with my friend.
Jason Keaton, co-chairman of the 54th Annual Dublin Lawrence St. Patrick's Festival. Just to give you an update of what's going on, we've had our first event already, the Miss, the Scholarship Pageant, Miss Emerald-
St. Patrick's.
St. Patrick's Scholarship there. So we've had that one under our belt. We have over 54 events. We've got some new events going on. We've got a Super Sunday brunch at the Country Club. We're looking forward to that. We've changed the, these kind of social event, we're going to host it at the Ice House downtown. They've done a great renovation on that building, so we chose to move from Dublin Country Club to the Ice House, and we're doing a twenties-themed gala that will be included with your membership for the Blarney Stone or the Shalali, which is not a cult or anything, it's just an Irish tradition for male and female. We try to get that out there, but we encourage everybody to come be a part of that, it's going to be a great evening, have a live band, great food, and that's going to be a great event. We hope to have a great success with that. The balloon festival is growing, we are hoping and praying for great weather for that. We've got about 18 balloons this year, and one of the main ones is actually in the shape of a shamrock. It's a great-looking balloon, so we're really hoping for great weather. So we have 18 balloonists. We will try to launch, weather permitting, on Friday around 4:00 from each school. We're going to try to do West Lawrence, East Lawrence, Dublin, and Trinity. And then we'll have the balloon glow out at Southern Pines that evening. If you purchase a ticket for the Shalali Blarney Stone, you have tethered ride tickets, which allows you to get in the balloon. It's tied down, if you don't want to take a full ride, it goes right up and it comes right back down. So you can kind of get a little taste of what it's like to be in the balloon. But we'll have a movie playing that evening, we'll have food. It's going to be a great event as well, Friday and Saturday, for the balloons. We're super excited about that event. Of course, first Friday's coming up, we have the Pig in the Park, which is always a great event, and always a great turnout, barbecue contests. If any of you, if you haven't been down into it, you've definitely missed out on that one. So please make sure and show up to those, as well as many other events. I've got brochures here, if you guys would like any copies of those. Like I said, we've got a lot going on, Debbie and I, along with the committee and the city, have been working extremely hard to make this festival possible. It takes a lot of hard work and a lot of time, a lot of dedication by so many people, and we're definitely grateful for the City of Dublin for everything that they do, the police department, to you guys, and the mayor, and everyone else that's involved. So thank you so much for that. And then to the committee, of course, we're looking for a great event. Of course, Super Saturday is the, is the big event. We'll have it again downtown at the Farmer's Market, and then we'll have the road race, we'll have the parade, we'll have the arts and crafts, and then we're going to finish up. Last year, we brought back the munchies on a kind of small scale. It was downtown, of course, it kind of got put to the side for a few years, but Jeff Cannon and Kathy Jones have spearheaded that. And last year, we actually sold out of food. It's in Stubbs Park at 6:00, and it'll be, coincides with a Rockcom concert called Shamrock. Had a great event last year, a great turnout. I mean, it was well-attended, nothing bad happened. So of course, we'd like to reiterate that, because some people still associate bad things with the park, and we wanted to kind of dissolve that and make it a safe place, you know, for people to come, bring their families, and feel like they'll be safe. And that's, of course, alongside the police department, the sheriff department, State Patrol, and all those law enforcement people doing their part to make everyone feel safe. So we're extremely excited about that. Other than that, we're greening up for Dublin, and we're excited to be here, and we hope to see each and every one of you guys there. And that's a minimal update unless there's something else.
No.
You need to-
Counsel, anybody got any questions for them?
Just an exciting time coming up, so encourage everybody to participate.
Use the time and hope everybody will be safe and enjoy everything, because y'all go to an awful lot of trouble. A whole lot of people go to an awful lot of effort to make this a wonderful festival, so hopefully everybody will get to enjoying. All right, well, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you all.
As 2018 comes to an end, Century 21, Durden-Cornegay would like to take this opportunity to thank you for another terrific year. And on behalf of all the agents at Century 21, including Charlene Lamb, David Deaves, Delton Lamb, Benny Helton, Jay Bailey, Reina Doverly, Pam Tillery, Jessica Granger, Jennifer Bradley, Ruth Watson, Sarah Kobe, Jim Jared, Charlene Brantley, Jody Tanner, Karen Whitmer, Yvonne Robertson, and broker George Durden, thanks for another great year. If you're buying or selling a home, commercial property, or land, count on the professionals at Century 21 Durden-Cornegay. For more information, log onto c21dublin.com. Century 21 Durden-Cornegay, broker George Durden.
Okay, the next item is one of the items that we added to the agenda today, and this is a resolution by the mayor and council of City of Dublin opposing House Bill 302, Preemption of Local Building Design Standards. Do I just read this, or do you want to tell about it? Or you want to-
I'll tell about it, and I'll read it right quick.
Okay, good.
It's, the state legislature is wanting to pass a new law, House Bill 302, that keeps municipalities and counties from imposing design standards on buildings. And of course, that takes away our, one of our home rule powers, which cities don't like to do. We figure like we can handle our own business, don't need the state doing it. And I'll read this, it's a little long, and I apologize for that, that everybody needs to hear. Whereas HB 302 would prohibit local governments from regulating building design elements in single or double-family dwellings, which can negatively impact economic development efforts and harm competitiveness. And appropriate local design standards and land use policies create a diverse, stable, profitable, and sustainable residential development landscape. And HB 302 is a bill that would undermine self-determination of citizens to establish community standards as illustrated by the following. Municipal and county officials are elected, in part, to make decisions about the look and feel of their communities, which fosters economic development, preserves the character of communities. Municipalities and counties use design standards to ensure that property values of surrounding property owners remain protected from incompatible development. And HB 302 would severely erode the ability of all 538 Georgia cities and 159 counties to address unique and community-specific quality of life issues. County and municipal governments use building design standards to protect property values, attract high-quality builders, and block incompatible development. And building design standards assure residents and businesses, business owners, that their investments will be protected, and that others who come behind them will be equally committed to quality. And local governments spend a large amount of resources studying, surveying, crafting, and defining their vision and development strategies and design standards for an integral part of those endeavors to attract residents, businesses, and much coveted trained workforce. And development and redevelopment efforts should reflect the community and its vision while simultaneously creating a sense of place. County and municipal government officials are elected to make decisions about the look and feel of their communities, and HB 302 would transfer that power from duly-elected local leaders to outside groups with little to no stake in the future or success of Georgia's municipalities, including real estate developers and home builders. And building design standards neither discourage nor favor affordable housing, nor prevent the ability, the availability of certain housing types, as supporters of HB 302 purport. And local governments should have the ability to provide more affordable housing options without sacrificing their unique character or threatening economic growth. And although historic districts are protected in HB 302, which indicates an understanding that standards do in fact make sense, downtown overlays or other similar special zoning districts are not. And local governments should be empowered to enforce building design standards to make today's thriving downtown tomorrow's historic district. And by limiting the ability of local governments to enforce building design standards in single or double-family dwellings, HB 302 would negatively impact quality of life issues, including economic growth and the safety and welfare of Georgia's citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Dublin, Georgia, that this governing body forces its opposition to HB 302, Preemption of Local Building Design Standards. Be it further resolved, that a copy of this resolution be delivered to members of the City of Dublin's local delegation and made available for distribution to the public and the press.
We need to vote to adopt the resolution. All right, so I need a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Brown, and second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so this resolution is now adopted by the City of Dublin. All right, the next item on the agenda is a presentation by Mr. Greg Chapman of Nichols Colley and Associates LLC of our fiscal year 18 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So, Mr. Chapman.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. We were happy again this year to perform the audit for the City of Dublin. And as part of your financial statements, our job is to audit the financial statements, which I'll talk about in a minute, but one of the processes that we do is submit that CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, to the Georgia, or the Governmental Financial Officers Association, and they review your financial statements and the information, and they award a certificate of excellence. And for 2017, the city received that for what I believe is the 30th consecutive year. So that's good news, and we've submitted that for the 2018 year. Our job as your auditor is to perform an audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States, as well as governmental auditing standards. And our objective is provide reasonable, not absolute assurance, that your basic financial statements are free from material misstatement. As far as your audit opinion, we rendered an unmodified opinion, which sometimes that sounds bad, but an unmodified opinion is a clean opinion on the basic financial statements. That means that we determined they were presented fairly in accordance with GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. And this year, you did not spend enough to reach the threshold for a single audit, which is federal dollars that are spent during the year. If you reach $750,000, then there's additional audit that we have to perform on those dollars, but you did not reach that threshold for 2018. As a part of audit, review your significant accounting policies. Those are noted in section, or section one of your notes to the financial statements. This year, there was a new standard implemented, it was Gatsby 75, and that's how you account for your post-retirement health insurance benefits, very similar to what was done about three or four years ago for pensions. And what that does is, it used to be, there was a small liability for what was due this year on those benefits, but now you have to accrue that liability over your employees, over their tenure. So there was an adjustment made to implement that standard, and we'll continue that calculation going forward. In your financial statements, there's what I like to call hard numbers cash, you know, cash is a number we can go get with the bank and say, there's this much cash, but there are also estimates in your financial statements, OPEB being one of those, which is a post-retirement benefits. And in your financials, we, the most significant estimates are your allowance for uncollectible accounts, the pension and the OPEB actuarial assumptions, and we reviewed those estimates and were, had no problems with those. Finally, we reviewed the financial statement disclosures as a part of our audit, and we reviewed those and noted no problems. Few more communications I'm required to make. We did receive full cooperation from the city's management, staff, and others. That doesn't just include the finance department, we do have to work with other departments throughout the city, with, you know, the police department, as well as public work, so we receive cooperation from those departments as well. There were no past adjustments as a part of audit, which means there was a difference that we determined needed to be adjusted, and the city refused, so there were none of those. Everything that was proposed to the city was recorded in the records. I'm also required to inform you that we are independent to the city, we don't have any business dealings or that type of situations that would impair our independence. We are required to be independent in order to perform your audit. As a part of audit, we didn't identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that we are required to report, so no findings. And then, very briefly, because I know accounting standards are boring, there are some new accounting standards that have been implemented that will affect you in future years. Most standards don't generally affect the city, there's a couple, leases being one of those. The public's, the private sector has similar rules coming out in the next couple of years, but what that means is, usually if you rent a copier or a piece of equipment, you just pay the expense, and that expense got reported on the books. Now, under this new standard, you'll have to record an intangible asset for the right to use that property, and then the debt to pay that lease payment. So it changes the accounting a little bit for that. That doesn't hit you until 2021, but it is coming. Fiduciary activities will hit you in 2020, and the only thing that changes is, you probably flip right by, but there is a small statement right at the back of your basic statements for the school board, they're considered a fiduciary fund, you collect tax payments from the citizens, and then you remit those to the school board. There will be an additional page that gets added for that in 2020. And that's the most impactful standards coming out for the next couple of years. But again, we appreciate the city, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from counsel? So we got a clean bill of health financially? City's in good shape?
Clean audit.
Clean audit. Well, I just, on behalf of the mayor, the council, I'd just like to say thank you to Nichols Colley for the great job you do to keep us in compliance, and thank you so much for the report.
All right, thank you.
I need to get a motion to accept the report. Make a motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Edwards and second by Mr. Griggs. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Portions of this program are brought to you by Fairview Park Hospital, a leader in healthcare for Dublin Lawrence and surrounding communities, providing inpatient and outpatient surgery options and rehabilitation therapy services.
All right, next item on the agenda is a second reading in a public hearing of an ordinance to rezone 1.48 acres located at 519 Smith Street from R3 multifamily residential to R5 high-density residential development zone. So, to do that, is now when we go, when we close?
I'll read the ordinance first.
Okay. Read the ordinance then.
Is zoning map amendment ordinance number 19-01, an amendment to the official zoning map of the City of Dublin, Georgia, is previously amended for the purpose of rezoning 1.48 acres located at 519 Smith Street, Dublin, Georgia, from R3 multifamily residential to R5 high-density residential development zone. Proposed use is residential, single-family housing.
All right, now this is where I close the meeting. All right, so I'm going to close council meeting now and open a public hearing about this rezoning. Is there anyone here, do I have to have a motion? All right, so is anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the rezoning? Okay, seeing no one, is there anyone here to speak in opposition of the rezoning? Okay, seeing none, I would like to close, we closed the public hearing and now open council meeting. This is all new to me.
Doing fine.
Appreciate your patience.
Doing good.
So I need to get a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Make a motion to approve this change.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson and a second by Mr. Brown.
Mr. Jones.
Mr. Jones. So-
Call roll.
Oh, is there any, let's see.
Roll call.
Need to do a roll call, all right. So would you please call the roll?
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
Okay. Ordinance passes, thank you all very much. All right, next item on the agenda is a discussion and our action on a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver a quitclaim deed of certain property to the Dublin Lawrence Land Bank Authority. So-
I'll read the resolution. Resolution number 19-04, a resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Dublin authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver a quitclaim deed of certain property to the Dublin Lawrence Land Bank Authority to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
Okay, you've heard the request there, or do I have a motion and a second?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, so Mr. Griggs made the motion, and the second by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, the next item is discussion and our action on the declaration of surplus item. Mr. Jones.
So we have one item we'd ask counsel to declare surplus, it's a 1993. Chief, how do you say it? Sutphen?
Sutphen.
Sutphen pumper. It's a pumper and the pump doesn't work, and it costs us a bunch of money to get the pump working. It's got 108,000 miles, which is pretty good meaning on a fire truck, and it's, the main thing is it's a 1993 model, so it's difficult to get parts for it to fix anymore. It's, we think, we just think it's beyond, after talking with the repair shop, it's beyond its economically viable repair life. It just doesn't, we don't need to spend any more money on it. So staff would ask that you declare this surplus, and we will sell this on Gov. deals.
All right, what's the pleasure of the council? Make a motion, we declare surplus. Mr. Edwards.
Second.
Second by Mr. Griggs. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So that brings us to item number, I don't know if this is item 10 or 11, or 10A or whatever, brings us to citizens' count, citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens here that would like to address counsel tonight? Okay, and now we'll move to council comments, and we'll start with you, Mr., we'll start down this way.
I just want to thank everybody for coming today.
Mr. Mayor Proton, I say the same thing.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for coming too, appreciate it. Have a safe week.
You know, I'm not as sure as everyone else.
Thank you everyone for coming, as always, thank you for the police department, finding security, and thank you for the city employees for all they one does, and thank you for the audit and the explicit work y'all put into it to make sure you keep it straight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Proton. All right, thank everyone for coming out, and just continue to pray for everyone, and just keep, found prayers of bereavement, found prayers up in prayers of bereavement, found prayers, and just pray for closeness, and we all come together as a community.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor Proton. I too like to thank Greg for his expertise in involving the audit, and thank our staff by Mr. Black Daniels in helping put this together and working closely with you. But also, I know they've already gone, but thank the co-chairs of the St. Patrick's Festival for the time and effort they put in to deliver what should be a great 54th annual event, or events, and just thank everybody for being here.
Okay, Mr. Daniel. All right, Mr. Powell.
Look, come on.
Mr. Jones.
Nothing, aye.
Well, I just want to say, thanks for putting up with me tonight. I don't think I had but one little bitty, well, not so huge an error tonight, so I'm making good progress. Appreciate y'all putting up with me. And I just hope everyone has a wonderful and safe St. Patrick's Festival, please be safe. I know be an awful lot of activity for our police force and fire folks and all that, so thank y'all for what you do, and I just hope everybody enjoys this season, and God bless you all. See you later. I wish you a journey.